Yeah, maybe I can move this. Good morning, guys. Uh, no, it's not you. It's this thing. Oh, that's even better. Look at that. Won't even go live. Good morning. Oh, well, it's actually afternoon. We're gonna be recording just a little live show in just a moment. No problems, no issues. I have John Soul. Is it Soul? Like, is it Soul food or Soul?
Soul.
Soul. Isn't Soul?
Like the name Lowell, or just putting an S in front of it?
Yeah, we're gonna say it's Soul food, whatever. We're gonna invite some people. Please don't ever take offense if I like, you know, I'm not gonna make fun of your name, but I have to remember how to pronounce it, John Soul. Alright, you ready? We're gonna go in. Might wanna turn your seat.
That way?
Yep, so you can talk into the microphone. Don't pay any attention to the cameras.
Okay.
Bam. Alright, Mark, I'm ready. Good morning, Flagler County and the surrounding areas. You know, I always say Flagler County, but I forget that, uh, this radio show reaches other people, other areas. In fact, I have a podcast that you can go back and listen to any of the pre-recorded shows by going to todaywithpastaj.com. Click on Podcast, and there it is. It's that simple, and it's that easy. You can also go to my Facebook page, Today with Pastor J, on Facebook. Go to Twitter. It's two, the number two day with Pastor J on Twitter, because you know, they only allow you so many different characters. Just spell it out. And I'm looking, if you were watching me by Facebook Live, you see, I'm, I'm looking over at John, like, yeah, you know about that? You've gone John who? I have a special guest in the studio today, John Soul. Is that it?
That's it.
I wanna say Soul like Soul food, maybe because it's Sunday and I'm hungry.
Close enough.
But Lowell Soul, is that it?
Sounds like Lowell, but with an S.
Well, welcome to the hot seat on Today with Pastor J. Excited to have you here. And, you know, I've been looking and following at you. You just recently took a vacation. Yes, where did you go?
Oh, we went to Iceland.
Iceland?
I wanted to go to Alaska, and my wife and daughter, they wanted to go to Iceland, so we compromised, and we went to Iceland.
Okay. I like how you say, you compromise and they got their way, right?
Yeah.
And you smiled about it. Yeah, good.
I'm glad we went. It was amazing.
Amazing trip, nice vacation. So you are one of the city commissioners for our wonderful city of Bonnell. How is that? You like it?
It's a fun job. It's a fun job. I, uh, retired from the Army in twenty sixteen.
We did discuss that, yeah.
And I came back to, uh, to live here. And, uh, so I've kind of always, in the back of my head, always kind of wanted to run for public office sometime. And, uh, so when it was election season in Bonnell, I decided to, to run for city commission. And, uh, so I worked hard. I went out, knocked on doors, talked to people, met people. Uh, tried to run a strategic campaign, and I ended up, uh, winning a seat on the commission, so I felt pretty happy about it, and it's been...
A strategic campaign, huh?
Absolutely.
Well, what was your strategy?
Uh, well, for one thing, know who the voters are. Well, that's, it's always smart. So you wanna concentrate your resources on, on people that actually vote. And so out of like, almost seventeen hundred voters, there was really only like four hundred and fifty-seven super voters are people that actually vote, so I concentrated on those.
Who is a super voter? I've been hearing them.
As a regular, a regular history of voting.
Oh, okay.
Screen out the people that are registered, but they don't always vote.
Okay.
They're gonna work really, really hard, and maybe ten of them might vote.
Okay.
And so, you know, go for the majority of the voters and try to get your message out to them. Uh, and so what, like, for example, I went knocking on doors, and, uh, if I met someone and they weren't very talkative, I'd just say what I wanted to say, and, you know, try to get a little bit out of them, if they were very talkative, I'd leave them a little brochure, and go to the next place.
You had a plan. So you, you moved back here, though. Are you originally from Flagler County, or?
Moved here in two thousand four, to take a job with Flagler County Fire and Emergency Services Helicopter.
Okay.
And so I did that, and I was in the Army Reserve, uh, but through the course of my Army Reserve career, I accumulated enough active duty to retire from active duty. So I ended up retiring from both jobs.
Nice. And you have a wife and a...
Wife and two daughters, one's twenty-six years old, and living in Indiana. Uh, just finished her master's degree, and then my, uh, youngest daughter is sixteen, and, uh, she just finished her junior year at Flagler Palm Coast High School, and she'll be a senior.
Nice. That's wonderful. I think...
She just turned sixteen.
She just turned sixteen. I have one that just turned sixteen as well.
Awesome, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's something different. She wanted to cut her hair.
Oh.
That was the big thing in my house. She wanted to cut her hair, and she has these beautiful, uh, curly, curly hair, and I want, I'm glad she, I waited this long, because I had to get her to fall in love with her hair first before she whacked it off, so.
Right.
She cut it now, I wanna cut it. But let's talk about the beautiful city of Bonnell. Now, is it Bonnell or Boonell, or what's, it's Bonnell?
Pretty much.
Pretty much?
It's Bonnell. A lot of people don't even know. I mean, people live in Palm Coast, and they're like, where's Bonnell? You know, or is there, what's over there, you know? A lot of people ask those kind of questions. It's like, well, first of all, you got a small town right next to a lot of amenities.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you can get the Daytona equipped, you can get to St. Augustine, you get to Palm, Palm Coast, everywhere that you need to be.
Right.
Anything that you need, but you still have that small-town feel of, of a city like Bonnell. And, uh, a lot of people that live there have known each other all their lives. So there's a lot of, uh, I mean, everybody, almost everybody knows everybody. I didn't know hardly anyone when I ran. I, actually, uh, I live in Grand Reserve, and that's, you know, I bought the house first, and then found out I lived in the city of Bonnell.
Okay.
And so, like, being someone who's worked in the county...
Oh, we know where you live, John. I'm gonna come knock on your door.
Exactly. But someone has worked in the county. I know a lot of people in the county. And a lot of those people, you know, I knew they lived in Bonnell, but they actually live on the west side of Bonnell. It's actually not Bonnell, it's just county, but it has a Bonnell address.
Okay.
So when I was gonna run for city commission, um, I pulled the list of, you know, seventeen hundred or so voters, and...
That's not a lot of voters.
Not, not, well, we only have three thousand people in the city, so.
Oh, so it's only three, so it's a little confusing when you think about the county, the city, and so it, you only have three thousand people that live within the city of Bonnell.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus, and this is the area?
That's including children.
That's including children?
Yeah.
That's a small, I wanna move to the city of Bonnell.
Everybody should. Then we wouldn't be little anymore.
Well, what, well, where we gonna put everyone in the city of Bonnell?
Well, um, Grand Reserve, D.R. Horton's building eight hundred and fifty homes in their brand new...
Eight hundred?
And a lot of them are golf course front, so...
Okay, so do you have any of that affordable housing with the golf course?
Actually, yes. Yes, they do. In fact, there's probably the only city in all of America where you could buy a brand-new home on a golf course for two hundred thousand dollars. You say, well, two hundred thousand dollars doesn't sound...
That's, that don't sound, I'm, I'm looking at you going...
Okay, but think about this.
What'd you want me to think about?
I want you to think about this.
I'm thinking. Now, don't ask me to add.
Okay, I'm not being a salesperson for D.R. Horton here, and I'm not gonna ask you to add, right?
Okay, alright. You tell me, tell me what's going on.
Interest on two hundred thousand dollars is less than a thousand, a thousand a month, okay?
Are you a numbers guy? Are you a numbers guy? I can tell. You sound like my assistant. Because I fell asleep already, John. Real disrespect.
Florida has a mortgage credit certificate, so if you're in, in a, in a, the right income zone.
Okay.
Okay, you could buy a house zero down. D.R. Horton will pay all your closing costs.
What?
Yes, you can go ahead and zero down, buy a brand-new home, and then get a Florida mortgage credit certificate in conjunction with your loan.
Okay.
And that will take fifty cents on the dollar off of the interest rate that you pay after two, affordable home.
Hold on, hold on, since you're on the roll.
Okay.
This stolen, you know, that I haven't used my VA loan yet. Can we add that in there? What I get for that?
Zero down, VA, disability, you don't even have to pay a funding fee.
Wow.
Absolutely. Even if you had a zero percent rating or a ten percent rating, then you don't even have to pay the VA funding fee when you buy your own with a VA loan.
Isn't that something?
And...
I'm writing, I'm, uh, look, wait, hold on. But we gotta pause this radio station just for a moment, this here, because I need to write this down. Eh, 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 okay, no. But that's good information. That is great information. And you talk about that. Uh, before you go buy a home, I have to mention, uh, one of my sponsors of this caliber, Home Loans.
Yes.
Steve Barrier. You gotta call the guy. He's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful guy. You know, do you know Steve?
No, don't know.
Oh, yeah, he is a wonderful guy. He gets you the money. So instead of going to look for a realtor to find a house, he gets you the money. He's the bank. You can call him at eight six six one 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 two. How about a perfect way to segue into that, Steve?
Absolutely. And something else I'd always recommend.
What's that?
Whenever you ever talk to a realtor, talk to a lender.
This is, that's what's, that's what Steve does. He gets, he gets the money.
You talk to the lender first and find out what you can afford, and if you can actually get approved, then you go talk to a lender.
Yeah.
That's the right way.
So that's a great way. So you, you, I'm, I may be moving into the city of Bonnell.
I've always wanted to go and run for city commission.
Now, don't be crazy.
You can sit next to me.
I don't do politics. I'll come sit next to you, but I have to have another role.
Alright.
You know?
Well, you can come there and open us up for prayer.
I did that, which was, it was an honor. I was at this Bonnell City Commission meeting. Um, I was able to open up in prayer, and I've been to the commission meeting a few times in the past. In fact, coming up, I'm gonna come more often. And every now, and every now and then, I get these looks like I'm an outsider. What are you, not from you.
No.
You know?
That smile.
Is that what it is?
That's what it is.
What are you, what are you doing here? You're not from the city of Bonnell. But a lot of...
You made John Soul smiles, that's...
Exactly what it was. Now, is, I have, um, some of my church members live within the city of Bonnell, or so, you know, somewhere close. So I do some work, um, and, you know, in the area. And then I get the love on some people in the area. You know, I have a free, um, back-to-school giveaway I do in the city of Bonnell every year. So I have that coming up. So a lot of different little things, and, and actually, right now, at the First United Methodist Church of Bonnell, my summer camp is there. I have a free summer camp, and I'm doing it there with Pastor, you know, Pastor Terry allowed me to use his church facility. So I'm here a lot. I need to just move here. Look how much ministry I'm doing right here. I'm loving...
Money you could take.
Yeah, I'm serving people. I need to save gas money, and I need to save my tires. Did you see my recent post?
No.
Yeah, I have Maypops.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. They may pop.
They may pop back any moment. That's, I'm riding on Maypop, come driving up and roll around Flagler County doing all this work, but we gotta take...
Marketing technique, I would not recommend a tire company use the, the name Maypop. Probably not.
I don't, well, that was a joke.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a joke. I think I'm funny, but we gotta, we, we gotta take a break. We're having a wonderful conversation and dialogue with our fabulous, fabulous, um, Bonnell City Commissioner, John Soul. Don't go anywhere, don't touch that dial. You're listening to Today with Pastor J. Okay, how much time we have?
Uh, about twelve.
Twelve minutes. Okay, so I'm gonna try, huh? It goes fast, doesn't it?
No, it's time.
I'm gonna try to split it.
Okay.
So we still got stuff to talk about. I, I wanna talk about the affordable housing. So since we're still on the housing issue,
Yeah.
we really wanna talk about.
I got more to say about that.
Good. So now we can get into the meat of the housing issue. So that may, will take about three, four minutes to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay? And then we'll break, and then we'll come back, and we'll talk about all that other stuff with numbers that I have no idea what that is, and you can tack that on however you desire to.
Okay.
Okay? What was the other issue we said we were gonna talk about?
Uh, military rates, property tax, military rates.
There was something else.
Uh, you said, uh, you wanna talk about African-American issues?
Yes.
And I wanna talk about that.
Yes, we'll end with that.
And property tax, military rates, and affordable housing.
Okay.
Anything else you wanna talk about?
Alright, we'll ta, we're gonna talk about the, um, property tax, military rates, and affordable housing in the same segment. And then at the end of the show, we'll end it with some African-American stuff. How about that? Sound like a plan. Come on, Mark. Welcome back, and thank you for continuing listening. I'm excited because John is so nice.
You are.
He is something else. Oh, what's your wife's name?
Patty.
Patty? John is so nice. Patty at home, boy, yeah, sometimes. No. How long you guys been married?
Uh, next month will be nineteen years.
Nineteen years? Wow.
So my oldest daughter is my stepdaughter.
That's okay. But she's not your daughter.
She's my daughter.
That's your daughter? Ain't no steps anywhere?
She got engaged, too.
She did? You excited?
I am. She's married next year.
You waiting for grandchildren?
Um, I approve.
You approve?
Yeah.
I have some.
What else can you say? I approve. I'm getting pretty old and not be a grandfather yet.
Well, let's talk about affordable housing, because that's a big issue countywide. Um, even though you're in the city of Bonnell, you got, I mean, that's a county issue. The city's within the county.
Absolutely.
Unless things have changed.
Absolutely.
Unless you changed it.
We're the county seat.
So, where, what, what we gonna do about affordable housing? We have so many people that are here, um, just within the city of Bonnell. They're always talking about affordable housing, and what is affordable in a town really isn't all that great.
It, it, it is a problem, and, uh, it's a problem in this entire region of central Florida, uh, particularly.
I'm not talking about Section Eight stuff and all that.
We're not talking about that either. We're talking about, like, first of all, when people think affordable housing, okay, it, it, it has a negative tone to it.
Yes, people automatically think Section Eight, what's the other one? Some HUD, some USDA.
How about saying, let's talk about workforce housing.
Well, I like that.
Workforce housing encompasses young professionals, you know, the people that just got out of college. People that are in their late twenties, early thirties, they still need mobility. When you buy a single-family home, you know, three-bedroom, two-bath, the standard Palm Coast home on a Palm Coast lot, uh, what you've got is a ball and chain around your ankle if you're a young professional, because young professionals need mobility. And young professionals also, in addition to wanting to rent, uh, rather than buy, they also want amenities.
That's true.
You know, they want, they want a nice gym, they want a little social gathering area, they want fire pits, you know?
I want all that.
You want it all, right?
Yeah, I want all that.
Affordable price.
Yes.
Well, the, the, the simple solution to that is to attract developers who will bring in nice apartment complexes.
Why apartment complexes?
For, for multitudes of reasons.
I was, I was listening to someone the other day, and they said that a house is so much more affordable.
No.
Than versus than the house, because these apartment complexes get up and going, and they're so, they're bad.
No, 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 no.
Built properly and...
I'm gonna give you a really nice example. Go down Seminole Woods, all the way up close to US One, there's an apartment complex called Integra Woods. That place looks as nice as it looked the day it was built. It's a beautiful apartment complex, amenity-rich, okay? It's gated, it sits back off the road, it's attractive, uh, it has everything that a young professional would want. I like to see something like that coming into Bonnell on one hundred, um, almost across the street. Uh, oh, actually, right next to the, um, the new storage facility. Uh, there's a acreage right there that backs up to the E-section where a company called SR One Hundred Limited Liability Corporation plans to build a two-hundred-and-forty-unit apartment complex. And it's going to be a nice apartment complex. The rents are probably a little higher than I would like to see. Uh, but as you get a greater supply, the rents will come down, okay? Rents are high because the supply is low. When you bring supply up, rents will naturally market for you, will bring the prices down.
That is true.
Okay, so what's great about an apartment complex, let's say you got a two-hundred-and-forty-unit apartment complex. The ability for the city to bring in, uh, water and sewer service and so forth is, is really simple, because you're not having to spread that out over hundreds of acres. A mile of water line and, you know, everything, this runs about a million bucks a mile, so you can't, you know, you can't just like, say, well, we're gonna build five hundred homes over here without some, uh, developer investment in order to, you know, get all those services, unless you're gonna charge a lot of impact fees and everything else to, to provide the money to make that infrastructure happen. Okay, so with a apartment complex, infrastructure requirements are very small. The acreage is very small. Believe it or not, although we have a lot of land, we don't have a lot of really quality-buildable land in the core of the city.
In, in the core of the city.
So all the forest and everything that counts up, there are tens of thousands of acres of land, ninety-something thousand acres of land in the city of Bonnell.
Mm-hmm.
It's not likely to ever really be developed.
Developed, because it's not good quality.
Somebody's gotta build the roads before people build houses.
Right.
Okay?
Well, you say, you talked about, uh, workforce housing.
Workforce housing.
I think we need wage-force housing. We need, we need some housing that's gonna match the wage in the area where we are. We need affordable housing for families.
Absolutely, absolutely. Families can live in apartments, okay? Families can live in nice condos, okay? Families can live in single-family homes.
Yes, they can.
But until you get the supply up, the price will always stay high, okay?
So how we gonna get the supply up?
You have to attract more builders. You have to attract people. I've been talking to builders.
Now, I was speaking with Denise Caldwell. You know her?
I've heard of her.
Okay. Then she said something about she has about seven hundred thousand dollars in grants to go into affordable housing. Now, I don't know all the particulars, but I hope I'm saying it right. Denise, please, don't, don't shoot me if I'm not. Um, but she's having a difficult time in terms of the city, so you can't even speak about that, because you don't even know what to talk about.
Uh, I'll talk to her.
Okay, you'll talk to her. I'll tell her. Alright, you'll talk to her.
That's important, and one of the ways that we can get, attract builders to want to build in Bonnell, number one, they're already happy about the fact that we're easy with the permitting process, and that we don't have, uh, impact fees. We do have a water and sewer hookup fee, but we don't have an impact fee that goes on to every lot. Like, you build a house, you're gonna pay us as much money. We're gonna do that. Okay, so that's already a big plus, but we haven't been able to differentiate ourselves by price yet. And the one thing that's a negative for us right now is our military rate's seven point three nine nine zero, okay?
Okay.
In contrast, take three point two mils off of that for the city of Palm Coast. So if you're gonna buy a house in the city of Bonnell, and let's say that after your homestead exemption and everything, it's, uh, assessed the taxable value two hundred thousand dollars. You're paying about fourteen hundred and eighty dollars just to the city of Bonnell for taxes in a year, over and above the taxes that you're paying to the county and the school board and everything else, okay? Whereas it would be about six hundred dollars, six hundred and forty dollars cheaper in the city of Palm Coast. Now, you know as well as I know, that if you're going to drive down the road and you see two gas stations, and one's charging two seventy-five a gallon, the other one's charging two seventy-two a gallon. Where are you gonna go? You're gonna take the two seventy-two a gallon, right?
You know I am.
Okay, well, that's what happens.
You know I have a model. If it's free, it's for me. So if there's a discount or something, I gotta have it.
Right?
I'll do it.
That's exactly what happens in, you know, buyers, home buyers are price-conscious.
Wow, they are, they are, and especially in today's economy.
Really like this house, but I'm gonna pay six hundred and forty dollars more in a year on my property taxes each and every year.
Got you.
Okay, and the reason our military rate is so high is because we don't have enough people. We still have to provide the services of a city.
But you don't have any, you don't have any people...
Economy of scale.
Listen, you don't have any people here to have, you don't have enough space for people. You don't have enough houses for people.
We cannot tax our way to prosperity. We have to cut our taxes, attract growth, and then grow our way to prosperity.
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna do.
You, that's what you're gonna do. That's, that's what you're gonna do. You pushing for that? You have a plan. You have a strategic plan for the city of Bonnell. Well, don't go anywhere, don't touch that dial.
But I just wanna say one more thing.
Say one more thing before we break.
We're not going to take away the small-town feel of the city of Bonnell. It's not going to become a metropolis ever.
You sure?
Always gonna have...
It's not gonna be a metropolis?
But we're going to have...
If you turn into a metropolis, then somebody might show up, right? Don't, don't go anywhere. We gotta take a break. Good show, good show, good show, good show. Okay, how much time do I have?
Three minutes. Oh, my.
Not bad. Not bad. Ah, what is it? I have the proclamation right here. Pulled it up.
So before you get started, what do you wanna ask?
I don't know. I'm reading it. So that's when I can figure it out.
I read it, too.
You wanna read it, too? Probably.
Read it when it came out. I haven't read it since.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I've read it a couple of times. Probably some about the racial divide, and is there really a, do you see a racial divide within the city of Bonnell?
Okay.
You know?
I'm like that.
And I may, I'm probably in, talking about we've got a new city manager. The city of Bonnell has a new city manager. We're excited about that. And I'll, I'll say something along the lines of, unfortunately, uh, the African-American candidate didn't make it. Not because of COVID skin, but, you know.
I love the guy. I really like him.
You know, but I was hopeful that, you know, we was gonna make history, but we'll make history on another, on something else. So, and that we're grateful for the choice at the commission.
Well, he might not accept. He hasn't accepted yet.
Oh, we don't know. So, okay, so I have to work that a certain way.
Okay.
Oh, I may be able to talk about it. I'll just talk about we had an opposite, you know, the opposite.
Yeah, I really hate to, uh, before we start?
Sure, of course.
You're down there, are you?
We are live, still.
Well, I really hate to, um, to, I don't wanna say negative things about anyone.
I wasn't going to.
So I don't wanna like, you know, I don't wanna say something negative for a reason why I didn't select somebody.
I would never ask you that.
Exactly. The reason is because it's a really decent person, and when things...
The most qualified got the job. That's all I wanna say.
Yeah, I just wanna say that.
Well, the most qualified got the offer. We'll see if he gets the job, you know, accepts it.
For me, being a civil person, I didn't, the other three candidates, I didn't wanna say anything negative about any of them, because to say anything negative about that gets in the newspaper, and the next thing you know, they're looking for a job someplace else, and somebody reads that. You know, and it's not a service to them. All they did was try to apply for a job.
Right.
You know, it's not a service to them to say something negative about them and beat them down, and it's, it's not needed or called for.
Okay. Gotcha. We have three minutes. Okay. Do you know what the demographics are for the city of Bonnell? How many African-Americans are you?
I think it's probably about twenty-five, thirty percent of the population, so out of three thousand.
Really?
I think it's pretty close to that.
Okay.
It's pretty close.
Alright. We are having a great time today. I forgot to tell you, John, you didn't know this, but you're in the hot seat. But you cooled it off. It was kinda cool. It was kinda cool. You handled it really well. Every time people come, um, on the show, I say they're in the hot seat. I just say that. It's really not a hot seat.
You need a trademark, a brand.
I need something. Occasionally, people think that they're supposed to be hot-headed in the hot seat, but that's not the case. That's not the case. Well, Bonnell have just celebrated a hundred years. And during that time, um, County Commissioner Nate McLaughlin, he came out with a proclamation. And part of that proclamation, and I'm reading it, it says, "Whereas for the first fifty years of existence, Flagler County acknowledges the treatment of all citizens will not equally apply, which embarrasses the modern social conscience." When you moved to the city of Bonnell, did you see a lot of social or racial, I should say, racial divide?
Uh, I wouldn't say necessarily that you see it, but you're just more aware of it.
You're more aware of it.
But something that really struck me, uh, was, um, I don't know, a year or two ago, I was reading an article about the post office in Bonnell.
Oh, that is huge.
It was horrible. They actually had a policy where they were telling people on the south side that they live too close to the post office, and they had to get a P.O. box to get their mail. They wouldn't actually go to the south side to deliver mail.
Yes.
And that's just horrific, because people right next to the post office were getting their, their mail delivered to them. Now, that's not, it's a federal, you know...
So when you, speaking of reference to the south side, it's predominantly an African-American area.
Predominantly African-American area.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Well, I know the NAACP, um, were very instrumental. In fact, um, Eric Josie spearheaded that to make sure that people got their mail, which we're grateful and thankful for. But how, and, and this just recently happened, not that long ago, that they were able to get mailboxes and get mail delivered. How does something like that just happen and stay in this time? How, how does, how does that happen?
It baffles me. I mean, this is the kind of things that people should lose their job over, and this is the kind of thing that lawsuits should, you know, that's the reason we have lawsuits in America. Actually, you know, lawsuits actually help us achieve social justice in America. I think so. I believe that, you know?
Well, it's not for the crazy.
Most people, I, I think, you know, were probably, unless you're experiencing it, probably not even aware of it, okay? And, you know, it's hard to empathize with someone if you don't understand, you know, their experience. And so in this case, it's like, to me, it's just like, oh my gosh, what an embarrassment that, that is, you know? Not so much to our city as it is just to, you know, society as a whole, that something like that could happen in today, you know? I mean, to me, it's...
It baffles your mind, and you, and you're thinking, okay, these things just don't exist. But it, it, it causes you to wonder, me, anyway, as an African-American, in case you didn't know that, I'm actually black. I'm not, yeah, I'm not African-American. I'm black American.
That's great.
Just thought, you don't know anything about Africa. I'm not trying to offend anybody. I'm just saying I was born and raised here. Is, I go, what else is there? I mean, if, if, you know, it causes me to go, alright, what else is there? Have you seen any other injustices or things like that? You go, it's two thousand and eighteen, I can't believe we're still doing this. I know one hundred is almost like a divide.
It is.
From people on one side of the street don't even go to, I had a conversation...
South side.
I had a conversation with someone today, and I mentioned the Carver Center. They didn't even know it existed.
Wow. That's one of the best things going in...
Wait, wait a minute now, and they work right here in the city of Bonnell.
Yeah.
And did not know it existed. Blew my mind. I was, I was blown away. Completely blown away.
Excellent. It's an excellent, um, you know, entity within our city. Provides a a great opportunity for social interaction with our our youth, a place to to be. It's positive, uh the administration of it's positive. I fully support the Carver Center. The city of Bonnell supports the Carver Center and so does the county.
Well, I look at the um city commissioners, the mayor, the vice mayor, the attorney, um the city manager, you know, all these different roles, everybody sitting up there. I don't see anybody that look like me, John. Nobody with my skin color. Yeah, saddens me.
Well, there's a history that almost always, there's almost always been uh one person on the board.
Not that you have to hire someone, I see. I mean, you want the most qualified. I mean, I know, yeah, you want the most qualified. I know we just had um a a black American a- applied for the um city manager position. I mean, unfortunately, he wasn't um able, you know, to fulfill the the position, but it wa- it was nice that he applied. We need to get a lot of them applying.
He was actually in the top two. Really, really strong contender, like a a very, very strong contender. Uh in fact, I actually selected him for an interview. I read his book. I went to lunch with him for an hour and a half and it ended up being five, five and a half hours, cause the guy's got a lot of great ideas. A lot of positive energy. He's an excellent uh person. Uh no matter where he goes, I'm sure he's going to.
He's gonna do well. Well, you know, at the end of the day.
I think I heard he just got another raise uh for Swanee County.
Well, you know, maybe just interviewing with him, he got another.
I think so. Because they're like, we don't wanna lose him.
Oh, wow, that's, well, you know, I tell you what, we'll get someone on the city. Not me. Who wanna move to the city of Bonnell, which I probably will. I'm not running for, I'm not in politics. I just wanna tell you, that's not my thing. But thank you for coming. And I wanna invite you back so you can, we can talk about some of the other good and upcoming things that's gonna happen within the city of Bonnell and how you're gonna be instrumental in that and see how we can get some more people on my skin color up there on the panel some kind of way, right? And in the meanwhile, I'll just show up. You know, I'll add a little chocolate to it. Everyone is welcome. That is true.
Have to live in the city of Bonnell.
Hey, I show up.
And a lot of people show up that don't live in the city of Bonnell, but they have some sort of tire interest to the city.
Well, you know, it's part of our county and we love the little.
Everybody should go to a county commission meeting every now and then.
I'm encouraging that. I'm gonna start doing it myself. I'm encouraging that. We need to get out and know and be more involved. Instead of a plane, just go. Hey, you know what my, you know, my motto? If you're not at the table, you're on the menu.
That's right.
Gotta be at the table. Well, we gotta go. It's been great having you. Thank you so very much. Remember everyone, yesterday is gone. You can't get it back and tomorrow's not promised. What are you gonna do today? You're gonna have a great day today. God bless you. All right. Thank you, guys. Ooh, look at my hair. It's in the afternoon. Yeah, I'm not as polished as normal. Gotta go get my nails done and all that. So thank you, John, for coming on the show. God bless you, guys.